All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's go ahead and call the city council meeting for May 16th to order. Let the record reflect the starting time of 7:00 PM. And with that, Clerk Swob, would you please take the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
President.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present at quorum. Councilmember Spitzley is absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, I would just like the council to please keep Councilmember Spitzley and her family in our thoughts as we reflect this evening.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anybody else? Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like us to keep in our memories Dr. Lois Bader, who is the founder of the Capital Area Literacy Network. She passed away a few days ago, and I hope we'll keep her family in mind.
All right, are there others? All right, with that, please rise for a moment of meditation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of April 25th.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the minutes of April 25th as written.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we are to the consideration of late items.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move that we suspend Rule 9 to allow for the consideration of late items. Late item that we will have before us this evening is a resolution correcting some boundary issues, dealing with the street and land dedication for the Red Cedar Development.
All right, on the motion to suspend Rule 9, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we are to table items. No, okay, sorry. We are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
All right, do we have any councilmember comments? Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say thank you to all that came out to my constituent contact meeting, the second ward contact meeting this Saturday. We had a lot of good discussion, a lot of good dialogue, most about the budget. Feels good to be back in person with my constituents, so I look forward to having future meetings with you as well. Also, I just want to inform, you know, our community that Cristo Rey Fiesta will be held the weekend of May 27th, 28th, and 29th. That Friday, it starts at 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Saturday begins at 11:00 AM and ends at 11:00 PM. And Sunday, it also begins at 1:00 PM and ends at 7:00 PM that day. Sunday, there's also a special ceremony to honor all those who have served. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, do we have other councilmember comments? Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. So, my first ward constituent coffee hour is going to be this Saturday at 10:00 AM at the Rio Town Depot. And then the next one will be June 25th, which will be 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, also at the depot.
That's it. All right, other councilmember comments? I just have a few. I want to also thank folks that came out to the Southwest Lansing constituent contact meeting this past Saturday at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. It was really, really, really well attended, and the information that was exchanged was just fantastic. We had actually Carl Dorsheimer on hand from the LEDC, as well as Chris Klein from LEAP, who is soon to be employed through the LEDC with fiscal year 2023, you know, kind of the new arrangement that we're going to have with the LEDC. But in any event, the hyper-focus of that meeting was economic development. And so there were a lot of things discussed, I think, that were critically important to Southwest Lansing in ensuring that, you know, we scaffold people in the community, you know, moving forward. And then we had a number of folks come out that represented, you know, various entities that provided information. I want to say thank you to Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Daniels, who both attended. Really, really appreciated that, and I know the folks that were there appreciated that as well. I wanted to say thank you to Judge Kristen Simmons, as well as Judge Tony Flores, who actually were both on hand to talk about 54A District Court. We had Delisa Fontaine from the Departments of Neighborhoods, Arts, and Citizen Engagement. We had one of our legislators stop by. We had State House Rep Kara Hope. We appreciated her being there, give us a little bit of a legislative update, and talked about some things that we can be looking forward to in terms of coming down the pipe. We had Officer Glenn Briggs, who is our community police officer for the Churchill Downs area. He was there as well. And then we had several members from city boards, commissions, and most importantly, we had, you know, dozens of citizens from Southwest Lansing there to talk about their priorities as we move forward through 2022. So again, thank you so much. We are scheduled to have our next meeting June 11th from 10 to 12 noon at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. So if you're interested, that's located at 5825 Wise Road, again, June 11th, 10 to 12 noon. Really quickly, I have three neighborhood meetings this week to announce. The Churchill Downs Community Association will meet tomorrow, which is May 17th, at 6:30 PM. That's at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. We also have the Colonial Village Neighbors Association meeting that'll take place this Wednesday, May 18th, at Grace United Methodist Church. That's at 1900 Boston Boulevard, and that begins at 6:30 PM. And then if you live in a Luton Rich neighborhood, they will be meeting, and this is actually their last meeting of the summer. I believe they're, I think they have a neighborhood night out in August, and then I think they meet again in September. So this will be the last association meeting they have for several months. But in any event, that's this Thursday, May 19th. That begins at 7:00 PM, and that's at the Mayflower Church at 2901 West Mount Hope. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no announcements, so we'll go ahead to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will be giving away free geraniums for people to plant on family graves in the three city-owned cemeteries, Evergreen, Mount Hope, and North. This will be on Saturday, May 21st, from 10 to 2 at the entrance to Evergreen Cemetery. We will have 125 seed geraniums available to distribute on a first-come, first-served basis, and there is a maximum of four flowers per family. The Friends also will be planting flower urns or flower beds at the entrances to Mount Hope and North Cemeteries, at the Mount Hope Historical Marker, and at the planters at the Evergreen Colimbarium, and we will maintain those all season. The geraniums and flowers for these spring community service projects are being purchased by the Friends at a discount from Smith Floral and Greenhouses. Our group formed in 2007 to act as advocates for the city cemeteries by protecting, promoting, and prospering those three city-owned cemeteries. You can ask for more information by calling 517-648-5730, by going to our Facebook page, Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries, or our website at F-O-L-H-C.wildapricot.org. Thank you.
My name is Guillermo Lopez, from 1927 Pleasant Avenue here in Lansing. And I currently am the Director of the Fiesta for Cristo Rey, and I'm suffering this summer stuff. But anyway, it's a lot of work, and I thank all our sponsors that helped us, and like Councilman Garza said, it starts on the 27th and ends on the 29th. And we have in-between authentic Mexican food, mariachis, family-friendly games, folkloric performances, Mexican mercado, a garden tent, and much more. So I appreciate all your support, and I have a poster for each one of you, so you can take a picture and send it to everybody you know, and invite them here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other community event announcements.
Well, since, I have one 30 seconds. I was at my grandson's last soccer game, okay, so I couldn't go anywhere else, so during your meetings. So, sorry about that. But it brings to mind that we need referees, refs, for the sports, for everybody, so I encourage anyone who is sport-minded, wants to be a ref through Parks and Rec, please do so, because we do need them. Thank you.
Thank you. We are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, which tonight does include the items on the consent agenda, all the way up through resolutions and ordinances for introductions, setting a public hearing, so that's items 3 through 9 on the printed agenda, as well as the late item. And we'll give you about another minute to sign up and fill out blue sheets with Suella in the back. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
All right, thank you. I've got a bit, so I'm going to be fast. First, I want to offer congratulations to Valerie and Patrick Walters, who had their baby. For those who know Valerie Marchand, now Walters, they had a little baby, Violet Ruth Walters, so congratulations out there. We had a really great 3-1-1 press conference and launch, so that is up and active. So for all of you out there, when you have issues, you can certainly use Lansing Connect, but if you have issues with the city, call 3-1-1. We have six or so wonderful people who are trained and helping out. I want to congratulate CADA. They had their 50th year anniversary celebration. Myself and Councilman Brown and Councilman Daniels were there, and we had a great little act where we, where I spoke, and then Councilman Brown spoke, and then Councilman Daniels presented your resolution, and honestly, it was a wonderful event. I want to congratulate the Michigan Association of Broadcasters, who have opened their new Carroll White Great Lakes Center over on Chestnut. That was a great event, and I'm excited for them. The Food Bank had their Empty Plate Event, which went well, as it always does. I want to congratulate Mad Dog DiMarco for his 30 years or so of broadcasting here in Lansing as a sports broadcaster. He has moved, and he will be missed. The refugee community had a great fundraiser on Tuesday as well, their Thrive fundraiser. Our St. Joe neighbors had a wonderful cleanup at St. Joe Park over on the west side. We had a great Lids for Kids at the fire station. Fire station ate up on Marshall Street, so thank you for everybody who was part of that, giving out bike helmets to kids. Also on Saturday, the Board of Water and Light organized their Adopt a River, where they had a few hundred people there cleaning up the river trail, and they brought out something they called magnet fishing, which I had never heard of before. You throw a big magnet into the river, and then you pull out metal. Really cool. So thank you to the Board of Water and Light. As we were cleaning up, we ran into a Girl Scout troop. One of our Girl Scout troops was cleaning up the river, so thank you to that Girl Scout troop. Again, I'm running fast here. I want to congratulate the Lansing Pharaohs, our basketball team, who have made the playoffs in their first year. I got to see my first game, it was pretty cool. Things coming up, this Friday, the Lansing, East Lansing Mayor's Ramadan Dinner will be happening at the Lansing Center at 5:30. Glad we're able to restart that after two years of COVID. On May 18th, Turning Point will have their rites of passage. Many of you are familiar with Turning Point, it's at Hill Auditorium at 7:00 PM. Also on May 18th is the Consumer Complaint Listening Session with our Office of Financial Empowerment, and folks who go to that will get $20 gift cards to Kroger. I don't know where that's being located, so you can check our website. We have a few food banks coming up through the Greater Lansing Food Bank. We have one at Tabernacle of David on May 18th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. We have a food bank at the New Mount Calvary Baptist Church from 2:30 to 3:30 PM on May 19th. We have one at Cristo Rey Church from 9:00 to 11:00 AM on May 21st. May 28th will be our Employee Day of Service from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. We'll be cleaning up southeast Lansing, I believe it's Pennsylvania, between Mount Hope and, where is it? And the river, Mount Hope and the river. So everybody will be cleaning up, our employees will be cleaning up, it'll be great, and the public is, of course, welcome to join. Also on May 28th is our City Memorial Day Event at Little Arlington Cemetery. I hope to see all of us there, and those in the audience there. It's always a powerful event. And then finally, June 21st, I will be hosting the Black History Mobile Museum in partnership with our Lansing Juneteenth Committee at City Hall from 1:00 PM until 6:00 PM. Lots going on in Lansing, and I hope folks will get out there and take advantage of all the great things to do here during the summer.
Vice President Wood.
I'm sure you want to announce premium pay.
Oh, I'm happy to. We did settle with the Teamsters, and so we're done. We have signed contracts with all of our unions, and I believe Police and Fire got it on Friday.
Yes, they did.
And I believe UAW and Teamsters get it this Friday, because that's when their payroll is. We have signed contracts, and we are done.
And I deeply appreciate that that's done, and that our employees are, have been taken care of. Thank you.
Agreed. As do we all. Yeah, absolutely.
Clerk Swob.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and I believe we only have one speaker, and that is Loretta Stanaway.
And I'm actually going to pass.
And she's going to pass, so we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. The first item that we have is a tribute for May 20th for the Rotary Day in the city of Lansing. Next is a public hearing in consideration of a noise, a special permit that has been requested by MDOT, the Michigan Department of Transportation, and this is to allow for the construction at Horsebrook Creek Covert Replacement Project on Grand River and East Delta River Drive. This would be from 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM for the following days on weekdays, and any time on weekends or holidays from June 17th, 2022, through June 30th, 2022. And that would be for setting the public hearing for May 23rd. We have received a number of emails on that, and those will be entered into the record for that day. The last is the reappointment of Shelley Boyd for an at-large member of the Lansing Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, and that is for a term that will expire on February 28th, 2028. And with that, I would pass, move those resolutions.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have the item 6, the city budget.
Vice President Wood.
Mr. President, do we have the appointment person here?
We have two, yes.
So can we do those first?
Yep, so item 7, the appointment of Catherine Rathburn to the EDC Tifa LBRA Board.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So we had Ms. Catherine Rathburn with us on the May 11th at our Development and Planning Committee meeting. Good evening, thanks for coming today. Very, very involved individual in the city of Lansing. She sits on many boards. I'm not going to go through them all, because you are very active. She purchased the old Rum Runners downtown Lansing, renovated it, stated that she wants to make sure that the city is a walkable city, keep moving it forward, and want to make this, continue to make this a place where we raise families and keep them here in Lansing. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion. All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, and come on down. Congratulations, and we appreciate your service. That brings us to number 8. This is an appointment for Lucas Llandy as an at-large member of the Arts and Culture Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. We also had Mr. Llandy at our Development and Planning Committee meeting, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name. I know you corrected me last time. Is that, are you Lucas? Is that you in the audience there? No. Okay, he's not here. Okay, I didn't think he was here. He had a mask on last time, so I apologize. Anyways, he's involved with the city. He's very, very excited about ovation, and specialized, he has specialized knowledge in the public performance theater, as well as he supports publicly-owned venues. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, now we are back to item 6, the budget.
All right, Vice President Wood.
Okay, thank you, President Hussein. Before us this evening, we have the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. This was presented to us at the end of March by Mayor Shore. At that time, the council began meetings that we held, a series of question and answers between the departments to come down and address their budget concerns. We also had a community input on May 10th. We had a public hearing on May 9th. And before us this evening, we have the budget that was approved in Committee of the Whole. In essence, the changes that we made to the budget were to move a number of items that were part of the American Rescue Plan that had been put forth by Mayor Shore back into this year's budget, so that they were not dependent on the American Rescue Plan, and these are some of the exact same line items that had been in previous budgets. We also increased our revenues by $550,000, which was money that we, additional revenue that we are seeing from the recreational marijuana money. We also are utilizing $212,500 of federal reimbursement money in order to balance the budget. And we also have in our budget a series of budget policies that are part of our budget this evening, and include anywhere from wastewater funds, talking about those, vacancy factors, investment policies, general revenue policies, grants, transparency, non-motorized vehicle safety, environmental stewardship, and the Lansing Homeowners Employee El Hope Program. So with that, at this time, I would move the budget, and if any of my councilmembers, and I know that Councilmember Spatafor worked on this a great deal, as well as there was a change that was agreed to by the administration with the work of Councilmember Daniels, to include an additional $500,000 into local streets, which was, which ended up being changed in the budget at this time. So with that, I would move the budget.
All right, Councilman Spatafor, and then Councilman Daniels, go ahead.
I would move to separate the budget, divide the question along the lines of HRCS 54A District Court and the remainder of the budget.
All right, perfect. On the motion to divide the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. So we will take a look first at the HRCS department. Councilman Spatafor. Or, I'm sorry, yes.
We need to...
Oh, sorry. Vice President Wood.
Yes, at this point, I would move to recuse myself. The organization where I'm an executive director does receive a grant from the city for programming. It does not go into my salary at all, but for the sense of transparency, I want to make sure that I'm not voting on this item.
All right, so on the motion for recusal, further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries now. Councilman Spatafor.
Mr. President, I would move the HRCS budget for final passage.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I would move to recuse myself from voting on the 54A District Court budget for the reason that I work in the courts, and to avoid any appearance of impropriety.
All right, on the motion of recusal, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Vice President Wood.
I would move the 54A District Court budget.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Vice President Wood.
At this point, I would move the rest of the budget.
All right, so on the balance of the budget and the priorities, further discussion? Policies, sorry, not priorities. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to the late item, the resolution dealing with the street designation.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This was brought to our attention that there was a discrepancy in part of the description, so the resolution we have in front of us, I believe, will rescind the resolution of 2022-111, and this will be the resolution with the correct description. And again, this has to do with Act 4-2022, which is the street and land dedication for the Red Cedar Development.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. Councilmember Wood, introduce an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, readopting the codified ordinances of the city of Lansing. The ordinances read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee of the Whole.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. As was explained during our Committee of the Whole, based on a prior year where we did not recodify, readopt the codified ordinances in a timely manner, we've now taken the policy at budget time to readopt the codified ordinances. Different ordinances are established at different dates. They are supposed to be recodified every 10 years, so to make sure that we do not forget any of them or have any of them lapse, we do this on a yearly basis. So this would be setting the public hearing for June 13th, and I would move the resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for city government-related matters. Again, if you want to speak and haven't signed up, we'll give you about another 30 seconds to jump up and grab Suella before she brings me the forms. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
At this time, I would motion that all items be considered as being read in full, and the proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We have minutes of boards and authorities.
Place on file.
LEAP State of the Lansing Region Report.
Place on file.
From the mayor, we have two items, routes to make safe or demolish for 3337 Viking Road.
Public safety.
Communications and petitions. We have a claim appeal for $8,000 of the $9,488 bill in trash fees at 1241 South Holmes.
City operations.
And finally, a communication from Nicholas Zandi in support of amending the city charter to increase the number of wards.
Place on file.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Wood.
I would move to excuse Councilmember Alan Spitzley. I would move to excuse Councilmember Alan Spitzley.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to excuse Councilwoman Spitzley. Further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to remarks by council members.
Do we have any other council member remarks? Seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
At 7:30, it's still got time.
Okay, then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Elizabeth Libby Rice, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hello there, I'm Libby Rice. Elizabeth is a proper name. Anyway, I am very, I am a very interested resident of this city, and I just wanted to express some distress at what I have seen as a proliferation of new departments and new high-paying staff positions. And the reason for distress is perhaps in part because I do not understand the function of these positions entirely. And secondly, I think, as almost any economist would tell you, having salaries are typically the largest part of most operations in terms of, you know, getting things done. And I've been listening a lot and reading a lot about how we have, gee, a new city hall we need to put in place, or at least repair this one. And I am concerned that we can't meet existing needs of this city, yet we are spending a great deal of money on positions I don't understand their function. We have now, I understand, a deputy assistant mayor. I'm not sure what that is for. We also have the 311 system, the helpline, which is a great idea, but it seems a redundancy on top of having a mayor, an assistant mayor, a deputy assistant mayor, who some of these people, I would imagine, could assist citizens in knowing what's going on, or have them be responsive when all else fails, meaning our council members. So that's my first concern. The second one is, as an individual who wants to attend and be engaged in my community, I am having a very difficult time, A, tracking your agenda, not tracking your agendas, getting to council meetings, because the times change. Also, you seem to have a lot of different meetings, which is fine, you have a lot of business, but the times are at very inconvenient hours of the day. 3 o'clock, I can't make that. You know, consider that we want to be engaged, and please try and help us make that possible, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Passing again.
Passing again, okay. Nicholas Zandi, and then Guillermo Lopez.
Okay, my name is Nicholas Zandi, founder of and spokesperson for Decentralized Lansing in that order. An organization founded to abolish the at-large positions and increase the number of wards from four to eight on the city council. I speak here tonight because I was just informed that the city council has decided to consider the issue for further committee and council meetings. I was surprised that the council responded so quickly to this email and decided to consider addressing it for further meetings. For too, for far too long, our city has been dominated by politicians who listen more to their donors rather than listen to their constituents, and the fourth ward has had too much power on the city council, now taking up one half of the at-large seats. And worse, not a single one of the at-large council members currently live in Ward One. The inspiration for our proposal comes from the city of Detroit, when in 2009, the people of Detroit, sick of Indian Village dominating city politics, decided to increase, to decrease the number of at-large seats down to two and increase the number of wards to seven. Our proposal, however, goes further than that, as we believe that even keeping two at-large seats is an insult to the people of our city, because historically, at-large seats were created in order to keep minorities and working-class people out of government, being products of Jim Crow and the Red Scare respectively. It has now been many years since both tragic and ugly events occurred, and yet we still have these outdated positions on the Lansing City Council. I call on the city council to get this issue on the ballot for the November election, and I know only five votes are needed to do so. If that can't even be met, our organization will go for the actual petition method. The people of Lansing need more representation, and I hope from marginalized communities. And I hope that you listen to the will of the people, including me, of our city by getting this issue on the ballot, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Guillermo Lopez, followed by Daniel Arnold.
Again, my name is Guillermo Lopez, live in 1927 Pleasant Avenue. And I come back because there's a couple of things that I really want to emphasize about the Fiesta. One, the first one is that we're back after three years of absence, you know? It was hard for everybody, so, but this is kind of like a shining light, you know, at the end of the tunnel, hopefully. So that's, we're excited about that. And we didn't do it just because we thought it was a good idea. We had help, we had advice from the Health Department, who said, go ahead, you know, we support this and we'll be there. As a matter of fact, they will be at the Fiesta with information and testing and vaccines if you want one, so that's going to be available to the community at the Fiesta, okay? It probably will be on the Saturday, maybe Friday, but they will be there, okay? Certainly on Saturday they will. The second thing is that it's nice to have our elected officials be there. Mayor Shore will be there on Friday. Councilman Garza will be there as well. Both will take part in our opening ceremonies, Mayor on Friday and Mr. Garza, Councilman Garza on Saturday. So we're very happy about that. Next, I want you folks to think about entering these two contests. We don't have a Jalapeño eating contest, so you're okay on that. But, but we do have a taco eating contest. And I don't know how many of you like tacos, but I tell you what, we'll have a contest. So I encourage you to, to join. The second one is that we will have a grito contest, and if you know what a grito contest is, a yodel, you know, and after good music and good can of Coke, you know, and stuff like that, you can have a big grito contest. So I invite you, I invite our chief of staff to come there and be part of it. But, and the last thing I want to emphasize is that for the first time at the Fiesta, which is Memorial Weekend, we're going to do something special for our veterans and for those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. So we will have a remembers ceremony, I don't know what we call it, a salute, but it will be something that we will do this for the first time. And hopefully, it's another thing that happens year after year. And so we were commenting on one of the VFW post color guard, they need people to help because they've had too many, too many instances where they have made their service, so they're tired. So we're looking for a color guard, and at this point, Chief Sospis is helping us look for one. But I wanted to emphasize those three things, because, you know, one minute doesn't give us enough time to say all we want to say. So thank you very much for the time, and have a good night.
Thank you, and our final sign-up speaker tonight is Daniel Arnold.
Hey, everybody. Experienced Lansing for the miracle capital city I have discovered. We have survived through the peak of COVID to thrive. Look at Micro Village, Naps Building Arts and Pastries, tie-dyed wonders at Capitol Hippie, the ingenuity of local people. I would rather be nowhere else on earth, and I'm absolutely serious about this. Today, I took my weekday walk to eight government properties, speaking to public safety, local, state, federal. A United States Marshal Service Court Security Officer presented me with this American flag from the Federal Building. I was just so excited to receive it. Life here is exciting, and I'm thankful for all of you that make up Lansing. A security guard at the library was more than happy to celebrate with me as always before I took the cat bus to pick up medication at CMH. I live the best days of my life on a disability income in this city. Our city cares about the vulnerable populations every chance they get. Character in the people and those who adopted a river lately beautify our surroundings. I devote my time to build relations with security slash police and to advocate for those who have been through similar difficulties as me by writing books, speaking at meetings and listening to the public, including the Michigan State Capitol. It would bless me to give any of you a wheelchair-accessible tour of some great sights. No matter how amazing they look, the wonders are in the people. Everybody, everybody here just love this city. I come and offer a weekday tour to you, Mayor Shore, you, Councilmember Spatafor, you, Councilmember Jeffrey Brown, I'm not thinking of his name, Councilmember Hussein, Christopher Swob, Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Garza, Councilmember Jackson, and Daniels, if I left anybody out, I don't know, but doing my best here. Yeah, it looks like my phone just cut my speech, so thank you all. Yeah, come on out for, I call it smiley tours lately on my Facebook page, but I just, I like to do, I do my walk every day. I go out to, you know, those eight properties, and I'm just, it's just like, people are like, what are police? What are the feds? What are the state police? And you can just come with me and meet these people on a one-to-one basis and build the daily relationship that they invest in me. It's just so amazing, the city, how that's all set up, but not just that, but there's like, then I just walk from the Capitol to all those arts things, you know, and the new stores, and just so many sprouting things that have sprouted since the pandemic, and I know Mayor Shore has discovered some of them, and he got to do some ripping, cutting, and yeah, thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned at 7:44.